Good evening, everybody. City Council is still in closed session. We'll get started when they return to the council chamber. Thank you for your patience.
Welcome to the January 14, 2025 Millbrae City Council meeting. And I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:21 PM. Sorry, we're a little late coming back from a closed session. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Senator Lee Matt, Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Riley.
Here.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Holliburton.
President.
Mayor Frum.
Here.
All members of the City Council are present.
And for those who are able, would you please stand and join me at the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Please be seated. And today, we're going to begin with a few ceremonial presentation. And we will begin with the proclamation proclaiming January 20th, 2025 as Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, so whereas on January 20th, 2025 is the National Day to Observe the Birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And marks the 30th anniversary as a national day of service. Martin Luther King Jr. Day is the only federal holiday designated by Congress as a national day of service. You know, Dr. Martin Luther King confronted racial injustice with a message of love and commitment to nonviolence. His courage courageous leadership helped bring about much needed civil rights reforms. His impassioned speeches and sermons stirred Americans to renew their commitment to our nation's founding ideal that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Rose to the national scene in 1956 during the Montgomery bus boycotts, which led to the United States Supreme Court ruling that Alabama's segregation laws were unconstitutional. Whereas he led many successful campaigns for social justice, including Freedom Rides and the Albany Movement, which helped the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. And whereas Dr. King's words and actions are not simply relics of an era past, but of a call to vigilance, as pertinent today as they were during his lifetime, it's incumbent upon all of us to carry forward the principles of peace, equality, and service exemplified by Dr. King by treating everyone with dignity, courtesy, and respect. Whereas the city of Millbrae recognizes Dr. King's legacy as one of America's outstanding civil rights leaders and calls on all residents in Millbrae to reflect on the words and service of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. To celebrate his life and influence in our nation and consider their responsibility to bring peace, equality, and respect to their homes and communities. And whereas as we celebrate Dr. King's legacy, let's inspire to the life of service he modeled, remembering that everybody can be great because everybody can serve. Therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim January 20th, 2025 as Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service.
And we're honored today to have Paul Harrell, our very own Air Force veteran. He is our Millbrae Recreation Leader and also in 2022, our Volunteer of the Year, our very own Paul Harrell, an American hero. Would you please join us at a podium, please, to receive this proclamation?
Yes, thank you very much for this honor. I'm just amazed, yes, that, yes, Martin Luther King did so much in volunteering, organizing, and keeping things really going and and keeping that energy that I like to see and and because volunteering, you're really helping yourself and keep it moving, keep it moving forward and keeping your education going, job market and everything for people to understand how we can keep moving forward, no matter what's happening in this world, in this economy, we keep on going forward and keep that good or get the spirit in your heart and mind each and every day.
And it's very good to have you, you know, Paul. It's, you know, being a volunteer of the year and being as many years as you have been in our community, being part of us and continue to to give what you can and what you have for all of us to this community, we're thankful to have you. And for a moment, would you please join us for a photo opportunity, please?
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you so much. And then now next up, we're proclaiming January 21st, 2025 as National Day of Racial Healing. Councilmember Nguyen.
Whereas January 21st, 2025 is the National Day of Racial Healing. On this day, individuals, organizations, and communities across the United States come together to explore their common humanity and to build the relationships necessary to create a more just and equitable world. And whereas the National Day of Racial Healing is a time to contemplate our shared values and create a blueprint together for how we heal from the effects of racism. Launched in 2017, it is an opportunity to bring all people together and inspire collective action to build common ground for more just and equitable world. And whereas racial healing is the experience shared by people when they speak openly and hear the truth about past wrongs and negative impacts created by individual and systemic racism. And whereas racial healing helps to build trust among people and restore communities to wholeness so that they can work together to change current systems and structures and affirm the inherent value of all people. And whereas national equity in the condition where people of all races, ethnicities can live in a society where people's racial identity does not determine how they are treated nor predict life outcomes. And whereas Millbrae's participation in National Day of Healing signifies as a community, we want to create a space to celebrate distinct differences that make Millbrae vibrant. It is also means that we are aware that there are still deep racial divisions in America that we must overcome and heal. And some of these exist, Millbrae as residents still experience bias and prejudice. And whereas the city of Millbrae, in conjunction with other cities and towns throughout the United States, acknowledge January 21st, 2025 as National Day of Racial Healing and urges all citizens to promote racial healing and transformations in ways that are best suited for them individually and a mean of working together to ensure the best quality of life for every man, woman, and child. Now, therefore, we, the members of Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim January 21st, 2025 as National Racial Healing.
And it doesn't give me any more honor than to invite the very our very own, our next generations of leader, our Cora Wang and Evelyn Wang from the students at the Mills Tater School to join us at a podium. If you have a few words for us and also accepting this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Fong and council members. My name is Evelyn. My sister Cora and I are honored to receive the National Day of Racial Healing proclamation from the city of Millbrae. We believe that it is important to celebrate everyone, to honor our differences, and to focus on kindness. We believe that we believe that kindness and racial healing begins with us, the youth of... We believe that, we believe that kindness and racial healing begins with us, the youth of Milbury, and involves everyone younger and older than us. We hope that we can all be kind to one another and we can listen to each other.
Thank you very much. And I will commend you because in terms of healing and also inclusivity is something not only you talk about and bring awareness to, but you have to live through that commitment. And I believe you've demonstrated that you did just that. So thank you very much, Cora and Evelyn. And if you please join us at the podium for a little bit of photo to remember this day that you're in front of us. Thank you so much. Next item is the proclamation proclaiming January 2025 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And we have our councilmember, C.C. Riley.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Happy New Year to all of you. January is our Human Traffic Prevention Month. Most victims from overseas. As a country and a city, we encourage our citizens to fight against the human traffic by reporting suspicious activities. Make our country, city, and community great again. Thank you so much.
So much for joining us. And we have our police chief, Aiman Allen, joining us today to accept this proclamation. And you have a few words for us, chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and esteemed councilmembers. Aiman Allen, Milbury Police Bureau Chief. As the former police chief and sheriff's association liaison of the human trafficking program, excuse me, human trafficking program, I'd just like to thank you for bringing attention to this important topic. Human trafficking has been called the problem that hides in plain sight. And though many think of human trafficking as something to do with the sexual nature, it's important to remember that trafficking in the workplace is also extremely prevalent. I appreciate you helping us all to remain vigilant in fighting this issue and keeping it in the fore of people's minds. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, chief. And if you can have us, join us at the podium for a minute? Yeah. Thank you so much. And next up, it's given me great pleasure to introduce to you Peninsula Clean Energy and our very own CEO, Sean Marshall, who's going to give us an update on what Peninsula Energy, Peninsula Clean Energy has been doing and specifically what they will continue to do for the county of San Mateo and for City of Milbury. Sean?
Good evening, Mayor Fong, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Thank you so much for having me. As Mayor Fong indicated, my name is Sean Marshall. I am the CEO of Peninsula Clean Energy, a position I've been in now for about 18 months. Prior to that, I was the COO. And then way prior to that, I helped the county of San Mateo form Peninsula Clean Energy. So it's an honor to be back in this council chamber. It's been about 10 years, 2015, when I was here talking about community choice energy and what that could mean for the county. So with that, we will get started. I have a brief presentation for you all and then happy to take questions. If we could go ahead and advance to the video, that would be terrific. Peninsula Clean Energy was founded in 2016 with a clear goal, to provide clean energy, lower rates, and to combat climate change. As a nonprofit energy provider, I'm proud to say that we've managed to slash emissions by 94%, while at the same time increasing renewables and maintaining electric generation rates at a minimum 5% below PG&E. That's over $100 million back to our customers and our communities since 2016.
In the past year, we have secured our largest wind contract to date, adding over 200 megawatts of clean energy into our resource portfolio. In 2024, we expect to bring online five new projects, adding over 300 megawatts of new capacity onto the grid. This will get us within striking distance of meeting our 100% renewable goal.
Peninsula Clean Energy is showing that we don't have to make a choice between affordable rates and cleaner energy.
We don't have to satisfy corporate shareholders. Our customers are our shareholders.
Peninsula Clean Energy was started to combat climate change, but now it's so much more. The true value of community choice is that it's local. It means going to your street fair and seeing us at a booth and asking a question about your energy bill. It's also when you go to plug in your EV and seeing a charger provided by Peninsula Clean Energy. Peninsula Clean Energy serves all of our customers in our community with different language outreach and programs for all income levels.
A lot of the programs that come from Peninsula Clean Energy help our communities to take part because many times the communities that we serve are left out with the policies that comes down to address climate change and greenhouse gas emissions.
We're helping the community install thousands of chargers, including at hard-to-reach places like apartment buildings.
So with Peninsula Clean Energy's EV-ready program, this has been so affordable. We're at 29 outlets installed and the cost has been basically nothing. And for mom and pop housing providers, that's really, really important to us because we don't have a lot of capital to spend.
The average charger in our program is being installed for about $4,000, much less than the average of $10,000 to $18,000 in other programs.
We are your local partner in building a sustainable community. Peninsula Clean Energy remains steadfast in our commitment to power our communities, combat climate change, and provide affordable clean energy to the customers we proudly serve.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to provide a little more detail and then talk to you a little bit about some of the benefits that we have been able to share with the city of Milbury. So next slide, please. Peninsula Clean Energy was... Okay, next slide after that. Okay, just as a quick reminder for some of you who may not be familiar with the model, what Peninsula Clean Energy is, is a partnership, a shared service, and Pacific Gas and Electric. So what PCE does is contract for, and in some cases, develop clean power resources. The delivery and all of the pole and wire infrastructure is maintained by PG&E. PG&E also provides consolidated billing, which is why you all get your bills from PG&E. So that at the end of the day, all of our customers, the city, our residents, our businesses, receive cheaper energy and cleaner energy. Next slide. A big focus of PCE in the past year or so, and it really continues, is supporting energy affordability. So just some quick highlights here. We are approaching by the end of, well, actually, at the end of 2024, and we'll have these numbers by March. We are pushing toward $200 million total saved for our customers throughout our service territory since our launch. In the spring of 2024, our board amended its rate-setting approach to a cost-of-service model that essentially allows us to, or requires us, I should say, to set rates according to what we need, our revenue requirements, and then provide any excess back to our customers in the form of rebates and discounts. So it's a much closer model in terms of budgeting against what is actually required to run the business and then be able to hopefully share deeper discounts with our customers. At this time last year, our board approved a $68 million community reinvestment package. There were all kinds of things in that package, including a $300 rebate for our low-income customers. And 16 nonprofits were awarded over half a million dollars for community outreach and engagement. Next slide. This is just a quick snapshot, and I can tell you that our 2023 numbers have just come in. I'm sorry that it takes a little while. But we are the lower royal blue line across the bottom. And what you can see there is in 2022, we were almost at a zero emissions. Right now, we are at zero emissions. And the reason for that is that the definition of geothermal is changing. It is now qualifying as a renewable resource. We do have geothermal in our portfolio. What you can see at the top is the California system-wide power emissions. And so you can see that that delta is significant. Next slide. Okay, I'm going to just run through quickly a couple of our key programs. A big focus of ours is supporting the transition to electrification and clean energy at the home and residential, home and rental level. We have a 0% loan available to any customer. It's a one-page application. There's no credit check. It's really the easiest 0% $10,000 loan that you can get. It must be used to support the replacement of gas appliances in your home, solar installation, or anything else that moves us toward the transition to cleaner energy. That number of 700, we're now pushing past 1,000 loans that have been issued here in the last 14 months. Customer rebates continue apace, and I'm very happy to report that coming out of the pandemic, where things were just very flat, we have increased our incentives and our rebates five times in the last 18 months. And so it is coming, and we're actually growing our programs, which we'll talk about in a moment. Next slide. Another big piece of the puzzle for us, our foundational piece is transportation, electrification, transportation. And so we have programs that support EV infrastructure, which, some of which you saw there in the video. We have installed throughout our service territory over 1,000 EV chargers, and we have 4,500 more in the pipeline. A number of those are in the city of Milbury, predominantly focused now on supporting EV chargers at multifamily housing apartment complexes, where they're harder to come by. Many, many rebates have been issued for our used EV program and our e-bike program. We run every year. We have a certain number of rebates that we give, and those sell out usually within a month. So we will be relaunching that in the spring of this year. Next slide. Okay, there are a number of ways that we partner with our member agencies. We have 23 member agencies, including the county, all our cities, and the city of Los Manos. We provide funding for climate action plan updates. We have a GOV EV for local fleets to support all of that. We have GOV PV, which hopefully your council is familiar with because you've done now four projects through round one and round two, which is solar installation on public buildings. And we have a new program, Member Agency Energy Grants, of which the city of Milbury received, I believe, over $400,000. We'll get to that in a moment. Next slide, almost done. Okay, Milbury highlights. So thank you so much for leading the way. We have almost 9,500 customers that we serve in the city of Milbury with a 97% participation rate. That is higher than average, so thank you for that. A little over 3.6 million saved by Milbury customers since our launch. We have 23 EV chargers. That number's actually higher now, but almost 400 in the pipeline here in the city of Milbury. And as I mentioned, most of that is focused on multifamily apartments and condominiums here in the city. These are all the different solar systems that I just referenced through our GOV PV program. I think many of them, excuse me, about half of them are live, and then a few others are part of our round two projects. 302,000 is what the city of Milbury received through our Member Agency Energy Grants. You all are using that for efficient streetlights and more EV charging and landscape equipment incentive, which I'm guessing is requesting that the landscapers use electric blowers, gas blowers. We have 10 youth climate ambassadors from the city of Milbury, a couple of whom you just honored through your proclamation. That's fantastic. And we do want to thank Mayor Fong for being a longtime board member. You also serve on our executive committee and I believe in the past, our audit and finance. What's that? Okay.
The Legislative Committee, yes.
Oh, and legis... Thank you.
Yes.
That's coming up. So thank you very much for your service. Next slide? Next slide? Okay, very quickly here, just recent developments that are carrying from '24 into '25. One thing to note is we had a goal that had been established about five years ago to reach 100% renewable on an annual basis by this year. And because costs have been so exorbitant over the last couple of years and customers are very focused on maintaining lower rates, we pushed that goal out to 2030. And so I just want to make you aware that we are incrementally moving toward 100% renewable by 2030, but we saved in the first year about $85 million in the cost of power so that we could continue on and deepen our discounts. So the board has been very conscious about affordability. Two new big customers that came on in the summer and fall of last year. One is the San Mateo Community College District, and the other is Caltrain. So Caltrain, as you know, has electrified their trains. We're very proud to be their service provider. We're currently updating our strategic plan. Phase one of that will be coming before the PCE board at the end of this month. We just launched an in-house customer service center, really paying attention to the customer first and wrapping our services and having people that can respond, not just as an outside vendor, but really full staff of PCE. So far, it's working very well. Next slide? All right, that's my last slide, so I will just say thank you for having me and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you for joining us, Sean. It's wonderful to have you here, giving our public an overview of what PCE has done and continue to do for all of us. And I just kind of want to highlight on some of the things that you've said here is, you know, PCE through the surplus fund program has funded all the agency grants, whereas, you know, Milbury has benefited over $300,000 a grant that helps us put together some of the solar installations, some streetlights, and help us further our goals on reducing the greenhouse gas emission and reliance on fossil fuel. And in addition to that, recently, you talked a little bit about the customer service team that you just put together. They are multilingual. And knowing that the city of Milbury has, you know, over 50% of our populations, over 60% of our populations, you know, from a community of color, and, you know, over 40% of our population is an immigrant, which speaks a language different than English at home, that is an important aspect that PCE continue to offer as a service to our constituency. The services that they pay for... The services that they pay for, that they deserve to have. And obviously, you know, we've always committed to that 5% discount from PG&E, but I believe, you know, in the last executive board meeting, we just recommended that, you know, through the next rate-setting cycle, which is July, that we're going to increase that discount to 10%.
Yes, and that's coming before your board in about two weeks.
That's right. And the executive board has made that recommendation to the full board for the adoption. So it's the PCE's commitment to continue to, you know, make impact on affordability and focus on affordability, knowing that, you know, the electric bill is a sizable portion of everyone's, you know, monthly budget and how PCE is at the table to ensure that your electric bill is as affordable as it can be. And so thank you very much, Sean, for all the things that you have done in your team. And obviously, I'm thankful and honored to be a part of the board and the executive board.
You do a great job for us, so thank you so much.
Anyone else on the council have questions and comment for our CEO? Yes. Councilmember Nguyen.
So on the page five of the slides, there was how savings were calculated. I'm just curious if you're using certain standards to calculate that, savings, or are you comparing that to regional averages? Just maybe more clarity.
Yes, so those savings for PCE are very specific because they're calculated on what we bill the customer each month. And you can compare every single rate that we have, and we have over 500 of them, different customer classes, different rate schedules. You literally can compare to what PG&E is offering for their bundled customer. So it is a very precise amount. There's a lag in calculating the savings of about 60 days because we work with a billing agent, so then you have to true it all up. It's not an average, it's an actual.
I see. So just for clarification, it's if we were to go with PG&E 100%, that's the savings we get compared to PCE providing the service?
The other way.
Other way.
So if you stayed with PG&E, you would be a whole bundled service customer, and as of about two weeks from now, you would be paying 10% more for your electric generation. PCE does not provide gas services. We don't handle all the transmission and distribution costs. So we represent about 30% of a customer's bill each month. And I will say, since you asked if you don't mind, it's really important, I think, for everybody to understand that the rate hikes that we've been seeing, which have been numerous over the past year, are predominantly all related to wildfire, grid hardening, and most of that is showing up on the transmission and distribution side of the bill. It's not as much natural gas. It's really now focused on all of those wildfire costs that were now buried.
So kind of follow-up, like on forecasting, I know this is still kind of somewhat educated guessing, but can you foresee any major cost drivers for customers like next couple of years?
For PCE, the cost driver really is 90% of our budget is for the cost of energy. And so that's a combination of, you know, a lot of solar, wind, geothermal, large hydro. We do have system power. So the vast majority of our budget is just to purchase power. The good news is that we're able to do that on the wholesale market and do that competitively. Look, a major cost driver, though, will continue to be the grid updates that are going on, including wildfire hardening, but also just the whole T and D infrastructure is being, you know, upgraded, which is necessary. But that will definitely impact a customer's bill.
I see. So is that upgrade happening right now, or is that?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? Questions or comment for Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just thank you. One quick comment, you know, pleased to see how this organization has developed over time. You know, I remember when it was first started as very much like a startup.
It was a startup.
In 2016, but has really grown significantly in a short period of time. And it's great to see how much you've been able to build up and reinvest back in the community. So maybe if you could just give one more, for the public, some information about how they can get access to those loans or those rebate programs for electrification, because that's something that we're trying to promote here.
Thank you for asking. Yeah, very good. The very first thing to do is to go to our website, those who can. Go to our website. You'll find a tab for, I think, customer support. We offer rebates. We offer loans. We offer grants. Depending on what you're looking for, whether it's an EV grant or an appliance rebate, you know, all of that will be there on our website. We are launching a new website in about two weeks that's going to have a feature that offers discounts for different appliances and things like that. So we're adding some bells and whistles, but you can access all of that through our website. The loan is one-page application. We are, we made it intentionally very easy. Everything is translated into, I think, six different languages. So we definitely thank you, Mayor Feng, for always being vigilant about that. Or you can call our 800 number, and we can help customers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yeah, I just want to also bring the light, thank you, Sean, obviously, for being here. You know, PCE provided, you know, electricity for 97% of the users within San Mateo County. And, you know, despite the fact that PG&E, their transmissions and distributions, about 66% of the bill, where electricity, and, you know, minus gas as well, and electricity was only going to be about 30% of the bill, you know, PCE would always be 5% lower than the cost of PG&E. And for the next six months, it'll be 10% lower than the cost of PG&E. It just goes to show that our commitment to make sure that we focus on affordability for all of us, ratepayers that we serve throughout the entire county, and much thanks to the great work of the PCE staff and also the leadership. City manager, you have something for us?
Thank you. And Sean, thank you. I just wanted to commend you and all of your staff on helping the city of Millbrae. As you know, you look outside, we're under construction right now and adding additional solar arrays. And that was a pivot with you and your staff when we're under construction with the Recreation Center and moving the priorities and working with your team. When this was planned in 21, 2021, but with the new Recreation Center in construction, which is a design-build, making that the priority, which now has solar arrays installed, getting that building to net zero. So I just wanted to recognize the partnership and the pivot with PCE, specifically with Millbrae and what we had under construction to adapt to our needs and get, now get everything, City Hall complex, obviously, the Recreation Center, fully constructed with solar arrays to get all of our civic buildings to net zero.
Thank you for building.
For building, yeah.
Yeah, so great.
It was just really pleasant working with your staff.
I will pass that along.
Yeah.
Yeah, and how we continue to focus on, you know, building up the battery so for future resiliencies as well, you know, in case there's, hopefully never happens, but in case there's any, you know, emergencies or wildfire.
That's the next phase.
Yeah, and that, you know, our governmental building will always be able to have the lights on and be able to provide, you know, electricity and be ready for our constituency whenever a need arises. So thank you so very much, Sean.
You're welcome.
Thank you so.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here and do come back often.
I will. Happy New Year to everybody. Thanks again.
Thanks so much. Oh, I think we have one public comment, is that right?
That's correct, Mayor, is Patricia Lamb.
Okay.
Patricia, please accept that mute.
Sorry, I'm not, I don't want to talk. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's no spoken speaker on this item.
Okay. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
All right. Next up is the agenda overview and staff briefing. City Manager Tom Williams, would you please provide a city update?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. I'll start off this evening by saying one of the great things about the state of California is our mutual aid program, not only between local municipalities here within San Mateo County, but up and down the state of California. And that's never a better example than recently with devastating fires down in the Los Angeles area. Central County Fire Department has sent two crews, so two engines, a total of eight staff members to provide mutual aid. Both rigs, both engines were assigned to the Palisades Fire. They'll be deployed for another week, week and a half minimum. So I wanted to report to the City Council that CCFD is participating, doing their fair share, bringing two engines, two rigs, eight staff personnel. And talking to the chief, it's not going to stop there. There's going to be a lot of mop-up, as they say, and a lot of rebuild. And we'll probably be sending some administrative details down to the LA area to continue assistance really over the next year. So just wanted to shout out to CCFD and thank them and everyone for, and wish them well, everyone that has been impacted. Wish everyone the best and certainly our firefighting team. Also, before I get into the update of what's happening, and I'd like to bring the City Council's attention that the city of Millbrae was honored nationally in Dallas, Texas, the end of last month with our partners Block Construction, ELS Architecture and Urban Design, Swinderton Management and Consulting, with three National Design Build Awards from the Design Build Institute of America. This is a national competition. And so we were awarded, and it was presented at the Design Build Expo in Dallas in early December, the National Award of Merit in Civic Assembly, and we also received the National Award of Excellence in Civic Assembly and the Best in Teaming for the Millbrae Recreation Center. So pretty significant recognition award to Block and ELS, Swinderton, and all of the council members and staff here in the city of Millbrae. So I'm very proud of that recognition and that award. All right, moving on to updates, if you move to the slide. This is a map of upcoming roadwork. It starts tomorrow, actually Wednesday, January 15, starting at 8:30 a.m. There will be some roadwork and paving work, starting at Ludeman Lane and Magnolia Avenue and the 200 block of Helen Drive and Heather Place. It's shown up there in red. This has gone out to the community through our Public Information Officer. I wanted to bring that to the council's attention, that there'll be some significant roadwork starting tomorrow in these areas. Also, we have several upcoming events. We have a grand opening of a new restaurant in our partnership with the Millbrae Chamber of Commerce, Modern Eats, which is a new pizza restaurant that opened up in the old Round Table Pizza. And so there's a grand opening, a ribbon cutting, starting at 11:30 a.m. at 414 Broadway, their location of their restaurant. And so inviting all the community, there'll be a lion dance starting 11:30, and then recognition by the City Council and the restaurant owners and operators. I've been there, it's fantastic. They've done a great job, not only on their food, but their tenant improvement within the restaurant. Friday, January 24 at 5:30 p.m. is our very popular Bingo Night presented by the Millbrae Recreation Center. So family, friends, bingo lovers can play bingo for an evening, again, starting at 5:30. You must be 18 years and older to attend. It is $5 per person at the door. You can show up or RSVP. Last time it was sold out, so I do recommend that everyone RSVP that's interested by January 17 by calling 650-259-2338. I know that's a lot of information. This is on our website, and you can contact our Recreation Department via our online portal. But it's a great time. So January 24, 5:30 p.m., Bingo Night here at the city of Millbrae. Also, we have January 25 and Sunday, January 26, starting at 10 a.m. to 5 p.m., our annual Lunar New Year Festival. This is in partnership with our nonprofit partner, Millbrae Cultural Committee, and then it celebrates the Lunar New Year Festival, and it just grows larger and larger every year, food, entertainment. So again, a great celebration. Year of the Snake is this year's Lunar New Year. And so again, that's Sunday, Saturday and Sunday, January 25 and 26, downtown on Broadway, between Taylor and La Cruz. Also, Friday, February 7, our partnership with the Millbrae Rotary Club is a Lunar New Year banquet and dinner. That starts at 6 p.m. Friday, February 7. The city always, in our partnership, has a table that we provide as sponsorship to this terrific event in partnership with the Millbrae Rotary Club. Next slide, please. And then we have our long-awaited Marina Vista Park grand opening, scheduled for February 8, that's a Saturday, at 11 a.m. Marina Vista Park is on the east side of the city at the terminus of Center Street off of El Camino. If you haven't seen it, it is absolutely stunning. It is our first barbecue and picnic area that's covered. One of the top requests that we have in the city of Millbrae is for shaded and covered picnic areas. And so the remodel of this park now has a shaded cover and more to come. So please put that on your calendar, February 8 at 11 a.m., the reopening, grand reopening of Marina Vista Park. And it's just, it's just a dynamite improvement for the community.
Can I just add that? It's City Manager, it's just that goes to show a part of our commitment and continued record investment into the east side of Millbrae, you know, having, redoing the entire Marina Vista Park. So I just want the community to understand that.
And then, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things on the agenda I wanted to bring to the council's attention. You have a purple folder at your dais there. This is regarding item number eight on the consent agenda, and this is just an addendum to the resolution, and we'd like for you to adopt the resolution. Simply, this just adds two positions pursuant to state law that's required to comply with the minimum law or the minimum wage requirement. So it adds two positions in our Recreation Department, and so that's the resolution we'd like you to adopt under item eight on the consent calendar. And then lastly, Councilmember Rinaldi reached out to me there. He would like to close the meeting in honor of a longtime resident here in the city of Millbrae. I'd like to hand it over to the council member for a quick explanation of the longtime resident that he would like to honor this evening and close in memory of.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Thank you, City Manager Williams and Mayor Feng. Earlier this year, we lost a long-term resident, Joseph Ionis Bosensaglu. Quite the man and quite the example of the American dream and the American story. Joseph was born in Greece, came over here in the '70s, found work as a rigger in the shipping yards in San Francisco in the East Bay, came to Millbrae in the '80s and raised his family here. Leaves behind his two sons, Joseph and John Bosensaglu, who were great long-term Millbrae residents and still frequently see them around town from time to time. He was an excellent father, an excellent husband to Joanne Bosensaglu, still resides in Millbrae. Not only that, he was just an overall good man, and many people may remember him frequenting Starbucks and Pete's Coffee, where you would oftentimes find him holding court there, talking publicly. But Joseph Bosensaglu, a really great long-term resident in Millbrae and a really good father, so much so that he has two grandchildren named after him. So though you're not here, you're not forgotten, Joseph.
And, Mr. Mayor, if there's no objection, we would just like to add that to the agenda, the official agenda that will close in memory of the resident.
Absolutely.
And that concludes staff overview and agenda update.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Any questions for our staff? Okay, moving on. And it's the approval minutes. We have the closed session meeting of October 1, 2024, and also the special meeting of October 7, 2024. Any council comment or discussions? And I just want to remind some of the newer council members here or returning council members, you can vote on this item even though you were not at the meeting at the time. So any council comment or discussions on those two meeting minutes? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion. Okay, it's, you want to make a motion, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Move approval.
Okay, we have the motion from Mr. Vice Mayor Holliver.
I'll second that.
And we have a second from Councilmember Rinaldi. No public comment on this item? Okay. City Clerk, would you please?
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Riley.
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Holliver.
Aye.
Mayor Feng.
Aye.
The two settlements are approved by a vote of 5-0. The two settlements are approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you so much. And today, we do not have any oral report from city committees and/or commission chair. Takes us to the public communication, and this portion of the agenda reserved for those who wish to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda. However, speaker must address subject matters within the jurisdictions of the city council. And every speaker will have three minutes, and the speaker is to address directly to the entire council and not individual council members nor the public. I have three speaker slip, and we will begin with in-chamber speaker and then move on to online speaker afterwards. The first speaker tonight is Jeff Steinberg, please. Followed by Gina Miranda after.
Hello, council, and thank you for giving me the opportunity. I am a 60-year resident of Millbrae. I've lived here all my life. I went to Meadows Elementary, I went to Taylor. So this is my home. And I want to speak about rumors I hear related to the council that there may be a vote of no confidence for Sheriff Christina Corpus. And I want to urge the council not to vote for a measure of no confidence against Sheriff Corpus. What I do is I take high school students, middle school students, Taylor's been coming for 15 years, police departments, sheriff's departments into the deep south retracing the civil rights movement of the 1950s, 1960s. I'm the founder of a program called The Sojourn Project, the hoodie I'm wearing. And we had the privilege the past two years of taking San Mateo sheriffs and deputies, led by Sheriff Corpus. And my experience with Sheriff Corpus has been outstanding. I have never heard a racial comment from her, I've never heard a sexist comment, nor have I heard anything homophobic. A report that has come out in the news was missing 29 pages, according to ABC News and Dan Noise. So I'm very concerned that the council might be hearing the noise and vote of no confidence on Sheriff Corpus. And I want to say, the sheriff's department would not have come if it wasn't for the leadership of Christina Corpus. I think she has done an amazing job with Sojourn, I can only speak to what I know. And my experience working with her has been nothing but professional, and her belief in diversity and equity is what we're about. And as we're following on Dr. King's birthday, what we celebrated tonight and did a measure honoring him, I think Christina Corpus, a Latina sheriff woman in our, who represents San Mateo County, but particularly Millbrae, where we have sheriffs and deputies, I think we are blessed to have somebody like that working with us. And I would urge one more time the city council not to listen to the noise and to not do a vote of no confidence on Sheriff Corpus. I think we are blessed to have her, and I want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Next speaker, Gina Miranda, please.
Thank you for having me, city council, and Happy New Year, everyone. A couple of items, one real quick. Thank you, thank you, thank you, city council, Tom Williams, for all of the great work you've done this past winter again, to help folks on the east side who struggle with weather and flooding and death, and lots of money spent on that. And thank you for being proactive and every, we saw all of it, and we all talked about it, and we really appreciate it, and think, hope you'll do that again in the future. So I am a longtime resident of Millbrae, going on 35 years. And I often hear from residents that they really value Millbrae's small-town feel and how can we maintain that? That's always a challenge, right? So Millbrae vibrancy can happen, and it happens when we all participate, when we can, are allowed to all participate, and we can all feel supported equally. The proclamation earlier, I think, said it perfectly, stated that we celebrate our difference. Okay, but in action, do we do it? Can we do it? I have a couple of ideas of things I've seen that I'd like to get improvement on. One of them has to do with the east side, further improvement, and the other has to do with culture projects in Millbrae that are taken on by our city formalized committees and commissions. So with, on the east side, like I said, I've been here almost 35 years now, and I've seen a lot of things. We are having this event for the February 8th arc on that side, and I would love to see better engagement by our city leaders there. And so we can, you know, walk, do more of the walking, the walk, instead of just talking about it. I've asked, I've engaged with Sheriff Fallon and asked them, that group, his team, to come out and invited them. I'm not part of the organizing, I'm just a volunteer. But I, one thing I'd like to see more of is better engagement with our new, newly appointed city leader.
Ms. Miranda, thank you so much for joining us.
Thanks.
And we have Stella Lau, please.
I ask the mayor and vice mayor and council not to advocate for a vote of no confidence on Police Chief Corpus. Our focus must remain on Millbrae and the issues directly affecting our community. As a small city with limited resources, we must prioritize improvement school, ensuring safety, maintaining road flooding, and addressing fire prevention by learning dry, by clearing dry vegetation and ensuring fire hydrants are operation, operational. Instead of getting involved in the county's affair, let us concentrate on Millbrae's local prioritize to ensure the well-being and safety of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lau. Next up, Marion Kong, please.
You know, we have traffic calming project in our district, it's not working. And we have, street is out of maintenance. I can show you the terrible street in Millbrae. And then, and I hope also we need to learn from South Cal, what can we do to prepare Millbrae for any disaster? Okay? And then trim the trees, I don't care, you know, to fill your water tank, whatever. So all these saying is, there's many things Millbrae need to be attended, addressed. And then I can tell you, from Monday to Friday, Sunday to Thursday, after 7 o'clock, downtown is dead. Downtown is dead. Saturday after 2:30 is dead. You need to focus on building the business opportunity. So with all those in mind, focus on what you can do locally, leave whatever above us to other people more capable of doing this. And then I see these young councils, you guys all need to learn, take care of our city first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kong. Always good to hear from you. And City Clerk, would you please call on the online speaker, please?
The first speaker is Ninh Hua, please accept the mute.
Hi, Mayor Fung and council members, this is Ninh Hua Chen. I just want to share something about the non-confidence resolution on Sheriff Corpus as well. And I don't believe it's appropriate for the city council to sign the no-confidence resolution. And our city council's time and energy should be focused on addressing the pressing needs of Millbrae, like public safety, housing, and the community development. So matters involving Sheriff Corpus are already being addressed at the county level, and the voters will decide whether to keep her in the position or remove her. So please, let's prioritize issues that directly impact Millbrae residents. Thank you for your time and consider my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ninh Hua. City Clerk?
All right, next speaker is Patricia Lam. Patricia, please accept the mute.
Aye, thank you. Honorable mayor, city council members.
Ms. Lam, sorry, Ms. Lam, can you mute your computer or your TV because you have an echo? We'll stock the three minutes up when you're ready.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, perfect. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Yes, honorable mayor, city council members, city manager and city staff, thank you so much for your dedication and hard work on behalf of our city. And I'd like to address the current situation regarding to the San Mateo County Sheriff. I strongly believe that the city of Millbrae should not include a no-confidence discussion or vote on our city council agenda. In my view, this is a county-level issue, and it falls outside the jurisdiction of our city. Our focus should remain on Millbrae's priority, which is public safety, forest management, wildfire and flood preparedness, schools, infrastructure, and fiscal responsibility. I urge you, please, to stay focused on what matters most for our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. City Clerk, did we conclude all online speakers?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and this is the end of public communication this evening. Thank you all. Moving on to consent calendar, we have item five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. And item number five, approved by motion to quarterly investment schedule for the quarter, for the first quarter fiscal year '24 to '25. And item six, adoption of a resolution approving a one-year contract extensions with the Central County Fire Department, CCFD, from December 30th, '24 to December 30th, 2025, and amend the fiscal year 2024 to '25 operating budget by $389,580. Item seven, adoption of a resolution accepting the 2023 pavement maintenance project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the San Mateo County Recorders Office. Item eight, adoption of a resolution amending the salary range for certain part-time, temporary, and seasonal recreational classifications in compliance with California State Minimum Wage Law effective January 1st, 2025. And an updated agenda item is in everyone's folder right here. Item number nine, approved by motion, a request from the Millbrae Cultural Committee for the use of the recreation center, Greg Hall, the fitness center, and the first-floor hallway and lobby parking space in the recreation center, parking lot, and fee adjustment and fee waivers for the community gathering with a fashion show that will represent different cultures on May 17, 2025. And item number 10, approved by motion, the calendar of regularly, of regular city council meeting for 2025. Does anyone wish to pull any item from this consent calendar? Any public comment on any of these consent calendar items? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion if anyone would like to provide it. Anyone motion? Vote, can you turn on your mic? Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Nguyen.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second from Councilmember Rinaldi. Any final discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk, would you please?
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Riley.
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Holliver.
Aye.
Mayor Fung.
Aye.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, and then that's item number five all the way to 10. And today, there is no public hearing, and then there is no existing business. And moving on to item number 11 on a new business, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or destiny to execute a San Mateo County Transportation Authority primary grant agreement. City Manager Tom Williams, would you please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Director of Engineering and Public Works, Mr. Sam Batista, for a staff presentation.
Director Batista. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. Sam Batista, you're Director of Engineering and Public Works, and tonight's item is a San Mateo County Transportation Authority Primary Grant Agreement. Next slide, please. So just to give the audience some background information, the San Mateo County Transportation Authority oversees funding from two sources, two programs, Measure A and Measure W. Measure A was approved by the voters in 1998 and reauthorized in 2004, and it ends on December 31st, 2033. It is a half-cent tax to fund projects consistent with the transportation expenditure plan. Measure W was approved by the voters in 2018, and it ends on June 30th, 2048. This also is a half-cent tax to fund projects consistent with Measure W congestion relief plan. Projects that can be funded with Measure A and Measure W include transit, highway congestion improvements, which also includes grid separations, local street and transportation projects, pothole projects, bicycle and pedestrian improvements, and regional transit connection projects. Next slide, please. So some good news, in November 2024, the city received $1.755 million in grants that were funded from Measure A and Measure W for the following projects. Nine hundred thousand, $900,000 was allocated to the Millbrae Spur Trail and Bay Trail Connection project, $675,000 for the safe front intersection improvement for Magnolia and Millbrae Avenue, and $180,000 for the Millbrae Regional Shuttle feasibility study project. Next slide, please. So the grant agreement, the TA, Transportation Authority, has executed separate funding agreements and memorandums of understanding for each phase of each project funded by whether it's Measure A or Measure W. We, the TA is trying to streamline the process, so the TA has developed a new primary grant agreement. And in order to be eligible for Measure A and Measure W funding for the next 10 years, the TA requires the city council to adopt resolutions authorizing the city manager or designee to sign the primary grant agreement with the TA. And this would allow access to project funding in a more timely manner. Next slide, please. So tonight's recommendation is for, is for the city council to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the San Mateo County Transportation Primary Grant Agreement. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you so much, Director Batista. Anyone on the council have questions and comments for the director? We're the quiet council tonight, so that's a good thing. Director, thank you so much for the update. If you can help bring a little bit about to the public, you know, it's my understanding that recently around December, we've gotten three grant application approved by San Mateo County Transportation Authority totaling about $1,755,000. If you can just give us a look, there you go. If you can just kind of give the public a little bit more context on that.
Sure. So once this agreement is authorized and executed, we'll be able to receive this funding. And so the first project, the Millbrae Spur Trail and Bay Trail Connection, that happens to be a planning and design type of project. So what we're trying to do there is we're trying to look at our spur trail and how to connect it to the Bay Trail, as well as how to create regional trails and trail connections within the city. as well as how to create regional trails and trail connections within the city. So 900,000, so we would have to go through an RFP process to get a design consultant. And we're looking at probably a year and a half to two-year project there. The next project, the Safe Route Intersection Improvement for Magnolia, Millbrae, $675,000 of grant. And mind you, there's matching funds from the city with each one. So I believe with the first one, there's about a $150,000 worth of matching funds. This one is about $50,000, I believe. And for the Safe Routes to Intersection Improvement is actually to make Millbrae Avenue, Magnolia Avenue intersection safer, which would mean that we'd be designing it, looking at the, upgrading the traffic signals, and then constructing. So it is a design and construction type of project, and it would probably be, once again, about a year and a half to two-year project just to get through design and then to go out to bid. And then the last one is the Shuttle Feasibility Study. So 180 with another 10%, so $18,000 worth of grant. And this is, you know, we, we heard from our residents that we wanted to get this east-west connector to hopefully get our residents, our older residents, to come down and try to hit all the destinations, whether it's here at the retail areas or to get to healthcare, and then also get down to the BART station or Caltrain. So, you know, so we're trying to see how we can, this feasibility will, will show how we can get a shuttle project funded in the future. So we're trying to get a, get this feasibility study conducted, determine routes, and fund the, et cetera. You know, so just a comprehensive plan to, to put together a shuttle project to get our, our residents from the west side down to the east side. So that's just a brief overview of these three projects.
Excellent. Thank you, Director. I just want to maybe perhaps add a little bit to it. If, and for the benefit of the council and also for the benefit of the public, if you still remember, if you just review some of the videos in the past, Mr. Ron Raquel has been coming to the council meeting on a consistent basis advocating for a safer intersection at Millbrae Avenue and Magnolia. And, and I'm saying, you know, I'm happy to say that, you know, we listen, and we're, you know, working towards it. And we now found the funding to finally fund this project to make this intersection a little safer. And, you know, those are the type of things that we do because we understand how frustrating sometimes these things are. And it, from the residence perspective, it seems like government takes forever to do our job. But, you know, slowly but surely, we get there. And we make sure we get the funding needed in order to get these intersection a little safer. And the same thing for the Regional Shuttle Feasibility Project. This is the project where we've been discussing for a long time. And it's something much needed to connect the east and the west, especially those who lives up the hill. How do they get down to the business district? How can the seniors who needs mobility assistance be able to, say, get to Walgreen and pick up their medication? How can they go to pick up their groceries? How can they go to the transit center, you know, where they can take public transportation? How can they have access to the city hall and also the recreation center or the Central Park? You know, how can they be able to enjoy the same services that we offer to everybody else when they don't drive and needed the mobility assistance? And that's what this feasibility study funding is going to get started so that we can eventually, hopefully, sooner rather than later, implement a shuttle program that connects the east and the west of our city, which frankly needed public transportation to facilitate our seniors and those who need mobility assistance. So great work on that. Thank you so much, Director Batista. I know you've been working on this for a long time. And just to bring about a little bit on sort of a future vision. I understand CKE and TA also have been working on grants and application process open up for safe route to school. And, you know, we've been exchanging email earlier today on that. If you have some update for us or future plans, you know, a little bit of a, you know, not too much, but a little bit of a sneak preview.
Sure. So things that we're looking at are these, you know, traffic calming devices that will hopefully slow down vehicles around schools. So, I mean, you know, and then also looking at bicycle and pedestrian connections to safer routes to school. So we are always here to assist the school district, and they are also here to, you know, assist us. So, so it's a good synergy and collaboration of doing these projects together and applications.
That's great. That's a good spoiler, I look. All right, anything else from this council for our director? I believe this is an action item, and I think we need a motion to accept the report. Is that correct?
No.
Oh, is it? Oh, it's actually a.
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution, excuse me. Unless any other, oh, do you have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do not have any speakers slip on this item, and there's also no hands raised online.
Okay, so I guess Mr. Ron Raquel is happy. So with that said, any motion?
I'll motion to adopt.
Okay, thank you so much. We have a motion from Councilmember Rinaldi.
Second.
Over a second from Councilmember Nguyen. City Clerk, would you please?
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Riley.
Aye.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Holliver.
Aye.
Mayor Fang.
Aye.
New business item number 11 passed by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you so much, Director. Item number 12, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or destiny to execute a professional services agreement with Cloud Permit for permit software services. And Mr. City Manager, I believe we have Director Mokinson.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, thank you. I think we need a long drumroll for this. This is something that we've been working on for quite some time. Without any further ado, I will introduce Mr. Andy Mokinson, our Community Development Director, for the presentation this evening.
I believe I've been asking for this since I was a planning commissioner.
Probably earlier. But we're going to get it, but now is the time. Let's get it done.
Here we go.
Tonight's the night. So for next slide, please. So we're very excited to bring this to you tonight. This was one of the city council's 2223, or 2324 strategic initiative goals, city governmental organizational success. It established the goal of developing a streamlined permit tracking system. There currently is no single dedicated permit software to manage and process applications across all of the different divisions and departments. Having a unified online permitting system would greatly improve process efficiency, ease of use, communications, and modernize the way business is conducted for staff and the public. And that's our goal. Public, we want good customer service, streamlined software, and this is a big, big project. We're very excited to bring this to you tonight. Next slide. You know, the good news is municipal permitting software has greatly improved over the years. It is so much better than it was when I first started out as a planner 25 years ago. It's just, it's really amazing what's available and what the features are these days, especially following the COVID-19 pandemic, when a lot of cities were racing to get online, trying to get those rollouts done and, you know, really fast. And since that time, the industry has realized that the future of city business is online. And so there's a lot more choices and a lot more quality products out there these days. So we prepared an RFP this summer. We sent it out. We received 14 responses from different permitting software vendors. We had a selection panel made up of staff from community, community development and public works. We reviewed the 14 submittals. We chose the top six to come in for presentations and interviews and heard their products. Next slide. Of those six, we picked the top two to come back and present their product and services in a wider demonstration involving staff from finance, public works, and community development. So we got everybody involved at the city. Anybody who's going to touch the software, because we wanted to get buy-in from our staff. They're the ones who are going to be using this day in, day out. And so the, the top two vendors gave demonstrations, the opportunity for staff to review the product and give feedback. And we chose Cloud Permit of the top two. Cloud Permit had a wonderful presentation. They gave a sandbox environment where everybody could log in and maybe could use the software themselves and see how it worked. They really did a wonderful job, and we were really impressed with their product. So that's the permit, that's the vendor we have tonight. So next slide, please. So I'm going to give you some background about what Cloud Permit is and show you what this product will be set up to do. So Cloud Permit is a fully online, cloud-based permitting software service. It's used by over 700 jurisdictions in North America, and they've been in operation since 2011. Their product provides a familiar, it's an easy-to-use interface for staff and the public. That's really important because if it's not easy to use, that means more training, complexity. We wanted something that was easy, streamlined, understandable, because the easier it is, the less training you need. You want something that you can see, oh, I know what that does, you know, quick pickup. Just like when you log into a computer, you turn on Windows, you know where things are. We wanted a product that was easy to figure out. 24/7 online access, secure online payments, two-factor authentication, has automated notifications, mobile inspections, so our staff can do work out in the field. So what we'll be doing, should the council approve the contract tonight, is we'll be working with this vendor over the next five to six months to set it up, customize it, configure it for our needs to reflect our permitting system prior to public rollout. So next slide, just to give you an idea of what this product does. It covers all the different needs that we have, from building permits, planning and zoning, code enforcement, encroaching permits, licensing and permitting. So it covers all the different kinds of permits that we have here in the city. Next slide. It's a very simple, easy-to-use interface. Residents can come in, this is, I'm going to give you an overview of what residents will see when they use the product. They'll be able to apply for their permit anytime on their computer. They can do it through their portal. It has an easy-to-follow workflow. It makes applying for permits fast and easy. It has a dashboard so that applicants can see where their project is. If they have lots of projects, they can see where they're at a glance, what needs to be done, progress, that kind of thing. Next slide. For big contractors, this is helpful because if you have lots and lots of permits going on at the same time, you can see all of your projects in one space. Applications are issued through the software. They're securely stored and organized online, so you'll be able to see your plans. You'll be able to see your permits. You'll be able to get a PDF copy of that permit when it's issued. And the portal enables applicants and their contractors to collaborate. One of the things that I think is really important is if you're a homeowner and you hire a contractor to do work on your house, you should be able to log in and see what the status is for that, for what the contractor's doing. So the software will allow you to do that. That's really important. Next slide. As I said, it's a, it's a very streamlined, simplified workspace, has an automated workflow to help walk applicants through the application process. We'll be working with the vendor to set that up. It can, it can, it's also a portal for communications. Messages can be sent and displayed from, to and from applicants to give them the timely information that they need to know about their permit. Log in, you see where you're at. Next slide. Drawings, site plans, blueprints, insurance documents. All of that is easily uploaded, drag-and-drop interface. Every permit type will be configured and customized in Millbrae. All the documents are tagged so they can be easily identified. So it automatically attaches a version, so you know what's the most recent version. And it'll automatically log which, what kind of plans are there. Because as you know, a lot of times contractors submit lots of different versions of the same plans. Software keeps track of all that. Next slide. As I said, applicants have a, can use this as a communications portal. They'll be able to communicate with us online. Logs and archives messages, time and date stamped. It also sends out automated emails. So if your permit's done, if your plan check's done, if we have comments, it automatically can send that to you. Send out reminders. It can send out when deadlines come. Next slide. Has an application progress tracker. It provides applicants with real-time status updates. They can print out and save their applications records from their own files. They don't necessarily have to keep it saved in the portal. As I said, they'll be getting status updates automatically. We'll program that so they'll know where, where they're at in the process. And there'll be no, no, no unknown information. We want everything to be there at a glance. Next slide. One of the great features about this is it integrates mapping data. So we use right now county's mapping data. The program will incorporate that mapping data. One of the great things that the software vendor did during their sandbox demonstration is they went ahead and uploaded the county's mapping data, and they put it into our sandbox environment. So we got to see how the mapping data worked with permitting system that they have set up. Thought that was a great feature. Maps are going to be integrated into the software. So applicants, the public, they want to see where they're at. Not just an address or text, it also has that map showing, hey, this is where your permit is at. For our staff in the field, for your inspector, for your code enforcement officer, they'll be able to see at a glance where their inspections are at, where their next code enforcement site visit is, so they can make a more efficient route in their day. They don't have to figure out, okay, where do I go first, where do I go next? That's a very important tool to help staff be more efficient. And they'll be able to do the work out in the field. Next slide. It comes with reporting features, so it'll be able to generate reports and data. It's really important for us. We have to generate reports regularly to provide to state agencies, other agencies. So figure that to run different reports on schedule whenever we're needed, whether it's housing starts, landscaping, swerve footage, whatever the state requires. And the data's all there. It's a very, it's also a helpful way to tabulate data and provide reports to us. Next slide. Really important with inspections. It has a great inspection scheduling module, drag-and-drop interface, has a scheduling interface with map support. So the, like I said, the field inspector knows exactly when and where they have to be for their inspection schedule for the day, whether you're code enforcement or a building inspector. Permitex can assign these inspections, include instructions, and it allows staff to do their job from the field. This is really powerful. I'm going to miss seeing my code enforcement officer and inspectors, but with this software, they'll be able to do their job completely in the field. Not only that, because it's cloud-based, we don't need to be in city hall to do these permits and plan checks. We can do them anywhere, which is great. That's the great thing about having cloud-based software. You're not reliant on being here physically at city hall to get the work done. And that helps with staff efficiency. The next slide. Any, all the information that we need to do our job in the field is available through any mobile device. Drawings, blueprints, site plans can be accessed out in the field. Photographs can be taken of inspections, whether you're code enforcement or building, through that app, save it, attach it to that permit. So that's a very powerful tool. It makes it a lot more efficient. We don't have to come back to city hall to log in everything that we did for the day. And of course, that inspection history is all going to be logged online and available for staff and applicants to see. So these are all great features. We thought that was a really great, really great software, lots, everything that we need to get the job done. Next slide. So with that, we're recommending to enter into a professional services agreement with Cloud Permit for a three-year period, not to exceed $175,000, with a provision enabling the city manager to authorize any additional extensions within their signing authority for the subsequent two and a half years. The software is less than $50,000 a year. It does have a $19,000 setup charge, because they do need to work with us to help set up that cost. But it's very reasonably priced at 50,000, less than $50,000 a year for the license. There's no cap on licenses, unlimited users. So that means that we can, we can have as many people at the city that need to using the software. Our fire inspectors can be given a lot of access to use the software. There's no limit on how many public users. It's just a straight, simple license for the software. And it's paid for through the city's technology fee. We collect a 7% technology fee to pay for things like permitting software and technology used to improve customer service and provide those services back to the public. So this will be funded through that existing fee. We've already budgeted it in the fiscal year 2024, 25 operating budget. Next slide. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have Peter Rotenberg from Cloud Permit and Zoom also available. Is there any questions that the council has? So with that.
Thank you, Director. Thank you for all the, thank you for the comment. Questions and comments from this council? Go ahead, Councilmember Ronaldo.
Thank you, Mayor Fang. Quick question regarding the integration here. You had mentioned a sandbox. So I'm assuming here, and I hate to assume, but there's been a pilot program where you've been able to test the software and make sure it integrates into all the points that it needs to touch with the city's technology?
Yeah, it, it, it's, we, that was one of the criteria is that they have to be able to use the data sets the way that we have our existing permitting software and incorporate it into their software. So yes.
Fantastic. I can't tell you how excited I am as being someone who's actually gone through the permitting process and seen some of the inefficiencies, as well as talking with many residents who, you've heard stories where. you've heard stories where, you know, why are things so complicated? So it's really nice to see us embracing technology and I'm excited. With that being said, I'd like to propose a motion to adopt, if there's no.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Councilmember.
So I heard data earlier from previous permit software, do we have a strategy for the migration of that data?
There is, in fact, it's in the packet in their proposal, they've identified how that would work and how it carries over what's involved with it.
Just one more question, slightly off topic, is there was a technology fee?
That's right.
So can you maybe explain how that fee is calculated and how does that progress throughout the, the whole lifecycle of the?
So the seven percent is assessed to building permits, so when people come in to pay for their permits, there's a seven percent technology fee on top of that building permit fee. So what that does is that pays for the cost of overhead technology that's used for us to issue that permit. We've had that in place for some time now.
Is that entirely for the city or the software company?
It's entirely for the city, so it's, it's not limited to just this particular software. We use it to go over computers, blue beam plan checking software, that kind of thing.
Got it, thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Andy, so, so the total revenue on that seven percent is?
We, over the last ten years, we've taken in an average of eighty-five thousand a year from the technology fee. So that's our, that's our revenue on, on average over the past ten years. Going forward, of course, with inflation, you know, permit growth continues and obviously that would be a higher number.
And so Councilmember, and for the benefit of all the council, so this is fifty thousand dollars a year, that still provides us with what Mr. Mogensen was saying, so anything that we need to upgrade within the permitting process, that still allows us to do that. Sufficient capacity, sufficient payment capacity, I should say.
And Fitter? You good? Okay, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, well, thank you for the presentation, it sounds like you vetted each of these proposals very thoroughly and from everything you've presented, it really sounds like a great product. Maybe for those of us who, in the audience who don't know, can you maybe give an example or two of some of the problems that you're trying to fix by?
Yeah, well, the biggest problem that we have is we've just got lots of different software doing different things. It's like, I think the term you might use is balkanized. So code enforcement might have one, building has another, planning might have another system, engineering uses another system, and they don't talk to each other. And one of the critical things is for customer services, they need to talk to each other. We know, we shouldn't have to go across the hall to flag something if there's a problem so that the other division needs to know, we all need to work together. And that's why having a unified permitting system is so important. That's just on the internal side. On the external side, you can imagine what that would do for our customers, we need them to, we need everybody to be on the same page, that's how you give good customer service.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Riley, you good? Okay, I have a few. One of the greatest challenge for a permit applicant is that they wanted to know in every step of the way where their permit is and who's reviewing it, who's pending to review it, when will they review it, and, you know, if they pass the deadline, how can they, you know, ring them back in, for lack of better words? So i- is that something that built into the software?
Oh, that's like the number one thing, we want to have a dashboard that shows the public that exact information with a timeline, who's working on it, when's the due day.
Who's responsible, who's the next person?
Right, and they should, and they should be able to not only see that person, be able to reach out to that person and vice versa, and that's our goal, and that's why we think this dashboard is going to be so useful.
Yeah, because, because that level of transparency is going to give permit applicant that much more confidence that things are moving along, you know, you get less calls, you get, you know, greater customer service, and all in all, that's, you know, people expect a certain amount of time required in order to get permit approved. They get frustrated only when they don't hear back from us, and they have no idea where the pin drop in the ocean, sort of, you know, for lack of better words to describe it. But now they can essentially track where their pin is in the ocean at any given time, which, you know, it helps build that confidence and it relieves the pressure from the staff having to take these calls and the frustrations from the permit applicants.
That's right.
So that's wonderful. Another one that, you know, we've heard consistent challenges is that, you know, we've got plan check comments that needs to be more consistent, you know, for example, you know, let's say the first round of review, you have ten comments, the next submission come in, you know, you expect to be less, whereas comment that does not appear between the first item, one to ten, all of a sudden you have twelve, thirteen, fourteen starting to come up, I mean, you know.
The software actually has features that help us write those comments.
There you go.
Drag and drop where you just choose that comment, because a lot of comments are, are just boilerplate, right?
Sure.
They're the same thing. And so this software has that feature to help speed up the way we lay out those comments and we organize it, and they'll be able to tick off once they're finished in that comment letter.
Right.
You never want to add more comments, obviously, that's, that's not going to, that's not good. You want to not, you want to get rid of them, and so this does have a very powerful feature to help us prepare those comment letters.
Yeah, and, and also neighbors can also see certain permits being applied for, given a certain address, so in case someone hear a jackhammer going up or a nail gun going up, and all of a sudden they can.
That is an option that's available to us, yes.
That's important too, right? Transparency speaks, you know, volume. That way, you don't get the call in the middle of the day, say, hey, you know, my neighbor's got a nail gun going on. What's going on? Or I see a plumber's truck in front and you start seeing demo crew coming in. So that level of transparency also speaks to efficiency and, and public trust. Knowing that if there's a permit being taken out, you know, people know, and if there isn't, well, code enforcement is on the way. So, and I think that's the addition that's required for the longest time now. I mean, like I said, again, a moment ago, you know, government work, slowly but surely, but we get there. And this, I'm finally, I'm, I'm thankful that we're finally here at this point where we can implement this improvement that is much needed to better serve the permit applicant, and that also goes to show how Millbrae is open to businesses, open for businesses, because, you know, is, is, does it also cover business license too, or?
It has that, it does have a business license module, so yes.
There you go. So, yeah, I just want to make sure we bring about all these discussions and the public knows that this can be a relatively comprehensive solutions for them, as they were seeking, you know, I still remember Modern E, a few months ago, we're a little concerned about the business license and all of that, and so, you know, with this improvement, I think a lot of those concern will be adequately addressed in the near future. So we have a motion from Councilmember Ronaldo, is that correct?
Correct, a motion to adopt this resolution.
And I'm happy to second that, very thankful for the staff to finally get to it. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Ronaldo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
Mayor Fung?
Aye.
Item number twelve, passed by a vote of five zero.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
All right, item number thirteen, accept by motion the annual comprehensive financial report for two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four fiscal year, and City Manager, I think we have Director Mike Sung.
That is correct, Mayor, I'd like to introduce our Finance Director, Mr. Mike Sung, for the staff presentation.
Tell us about our finances, Director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, and Honorable City Managers. Thank you, City Manager Williams. Today, we're going to talk about how we ended twenty-three, twenty-four in our annual comprehensive financial report. Next slide, please. So you're probably wondering to the public what an annual comprehensive financial report is, or an ACFA is. So our government, as well as most other governments, need to actually comply with the generally accepted accounting principles, or GAAP, and that's actually set by a governmental board, also known as the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So this is a board that oversees lots of different types of governments, including counties, special districts, us, and the state. What an ACFA really is, or an annual comprehensive financial report, is actuals that happened to a city or to a government agency in the past fiscal year. It's the actual, it's a look back, as compared to what you're probably really used to is a budget, which is a plan forward. So budget actually tells you, hey, this is what we're planning to do in the next fiscal year, the ACFA tells you this is what happened in the last fiscal year. So what the ACFA actually reports out is the entity's basic financial statements, that includes government-wide and fund. You're probably used to like the different funds that we have, everybody knows what the general fund is, we have special restricted funds like Measure A and Measure W, and then you'll have like special proprietary funds, of which we have enterprise funds, sewer, water. It also has a bunch of notes to kind of explain what's going on and what the financial data actually means, and statistical data, including financial trends and how we're heading in which direction. These annual comprehensive financial reports are audited by an independent auditor, and they report out any findings. Next slide, please. So for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, our net position increased by seven and a half, seven point six million. That's mainly due to additional capital assets that we've had, which are land buildings and equipment. Another thing to note is that we received approximately one point four million dollars in revenue from just TOT. The previous fiscal year, our TOT was about eight million, in twenty-three, twenty-four, it went up to nine point four million. So recovery's continued ever since the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and they've actually continued to improve across the board for all of our revenues. I'll talk a little bit about how much we've actually recovered on the next slide, but just to give you a heads up, we've basically gone from our low point back in twenty-twenty-one at about two point, two point two million to about four times that amount now. We're getting back to that, that full level that we had right before. So the other thing I wanted to mention is that our other post-employment benefits liability has remained mainly unchanged, that's OPEB, or it's also known as retiree medical care, is that way because we actually set up a one-fifteen trust, and for those in the public, a one-fifteen trust is really kind of a vehicle that allows you to invest in longer-term securities. Usually with our investment policy, which is kind of driven by the state, you can't really invest in things that's longer than five years. However, with specific vehicles like one-fifteen trusts, you can invest in other securities beyond the five-year mark, and this is really used for OPEB or pension, things that are much longer-term, much larger items. So let's go ahead and move to the next page, please. In, in summary, I wanted to mention that we had an unmodified opinion with no findings, this is what you want. You don't want any findings, you don't want a significant deficiency, you want a material weakness. Basically, it's kind of a clean bill of health. As I mentioned earlier, our recovery continues, I think I'd mentioned that we are at four times the pandemic low of twenty-twenty-one, about two point two million, we're already at nine point four million for last fiscal year, and it's trending upward this fiscal year. Revenue sources are normalizing, and we continue to be very fiscally prudent with our expenditures as well. We've basically reduced spending, we use all of our restricted funds for qualifying projects, and kind of a golden rule of accounting is you want to use your restricted funds before you use your less restrictive, you know, and the least restrictive fund is the general fund, you can use that for anything. But all the other funds, like Measure A, they have to be used for specific things, like for streets, that type of thing. We've also spent a lot of money on capital projects, but we've also deferred some on the non-capital projects. We're coming out, we're beginning to see that revenue normalize so that we can actually begin to build other items as well. So with that, I'm open for any questions.
Questions or comment from this council? Councilmember Ronaldo?
Just want to say I'm excited to see that TOT's on the up and up and recovery's doing well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment? Anyone else? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Just wanted to brief a comment slash question. Oh, yes, yeah. Thank you for the presentation and I'm glad to see the TOT improvement. It also mentioned in the report several of these development projects that are underway, such as the Alexandria project, Longfellow, the Office Depot site, et cetera. And I guess what's the timeline for those development, those, those properties will be reassessed, I guess, once the projects are complete and there's like a certificate of occupancy, is that correct, or?
Yeah, that's right, if I may, Mike can jump in. So as a development project progresses, there are different phases within the phasing of the development that the assessor will assess the property, and so we'll continue to see some revenue growth in our property tax. Specifically, the Alexandria building, which is on the corner of Millbrae Avenue and Rollins Road, the new tenant will be moving in, in April, and they'll start to phase that relocation of Icon's corporate headquarters from the East Bay here to the city of Millbrae. Longfellow should be completed by summer of twenty-five, summer of this year. They do not have a tenant yet, but my understanding is they are actively negotiating and there's interest in occupying the building. The Office Depot site, we just had the, the groundbreaking, and that is a, all in all, a two and a half year build out. So everything should stabilize with, with the new investment, with the land development projects that we see today, in approximately three and a half years or so, and will be fully stabilized with the increase, the assess valuation of those major projects.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions from, comment from anybody? We're all good? Okay. Thank you so much for the update, Mike. This is, this is wonderful to see the TOTs are going up and everything is on a healthy mend, so, you know, it speaks to our fiscal responsibility to our constituency and, and how we continue to have a balanced budget, and how important that is for our city moving forward. Thank you so much for your hard work. All right, so I think we need a, do we need a, a motion to accept the report? I think we need a motion and a second to accept the report.
That is correct, Mayor.
Motion to accept the report.
Okay, with a motion from Councilmember Ronaldo?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Vice Mayor, unless there's any further comment or public comment, which I don't see any.
There are no public comment.
Okay, City Clerk, would you please?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Ronaldo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
Mayor Fung?
Aye.
Item number thirteen, passed by a vote of five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number fourteen, then review and update the council ad hoc subcommittees and some changes. City Manager, would you please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this, this is a, an item that we've been working with you on and some proposed changes for consolidating and renaming some of the subcommittees. The City Clerk has a presentation here to brief the City Council. Before the council's benefit, these are the internal ad hoc subcommittees that the City Clerk has communicated with all of you for your interest, but that will change, I believe, this evening if the City Council moves to adopt these, these recommended changes. If the council does adopt these changes, then the City Clerk will reach out, asking the City Council their preference based on priority, first priority, second priority, third priority, and we'll be bringing that back at the next meeting for the mayoral appointments to these new ad hoc subcommittees. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to our City Clerk for a staff presentation, Ms. Elaine Tran.
Thank you. Good evening to Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. So next page, slide, please. A little bit of background, under the adopted protocols, the council ad hoc subcommittees are formed on as-needed basis. The subcommittee should have a clearly defined purpose and term. The subcommittee will consist of two council members recommended by the mayor, with concurrence by motion of the full council. Annually, the city council review the subcommittee to ensure its relevance and effectiveness. During this review, the council may opt to add new, dissolve subcommittees, consolidate or rename existing ones, as well as making changes. Next slide, please. On the left column, you'll find eleven current, eleven subcommittees, and on the right column are the ten proposed subcommittees as recommended by Mayor Fung. Three subcommittees are suggested for renaming, the first one is budget finance to budget appropriation. Number two is commission and committee interview to commission and committee appointment. Number three is infrastructure climate change, sea level rise to infrastructure environmental sustainability. The homelessness subcommittee's tasks are proposed to be consolidated under the public safety subcommittee, while the MSASP Westside Development Subcommittee and Eastside Specific Plan Subcommittee are recommended to merge into one single subcommittee under land use. The legislative and technology subcommittees will remain unchanged. The formation of three new ad hoc subcommittees is proposed The formation of three new ad hoc subcommittees are proposed. First one is Economic Development, second is Parking Authority, and third is Rules. It is also recommended that the Joint School Subcommittee and the Social Equity Cultural Inclusion Subcommittee be converted into liaison positions with one council member representative assigned to each. Mayor Fang has also recommended two additional changes. The Millbrae Chamber of Commerce Liaison will be renamed to Millbrae Business Community Liaison and also the renaming of Economic Vitality Advisory Committee to Economic Development Advisory Committee. I want to note for this particular item, if there's consensus from the City Council, staff will prepare a resolution for adoption to formalize this name change at an upcoming City Council meeting. Next slide, please. So council action tonight is to review and update the council ad hoc subcommittee to ensure its relevance and effectiveness. Please let me know if you have any questions.
So perhaps I can speak to that a little bit, then just bring one slide back. City Clerk, would you please?
Yeah, that's, that's the perfect one. So I, you know, I've done some work in terms of over the holiday and look at all the current ad hoc subcommittee that we have, all the different liaisons we have and looking at some of the things that we've done in the past and also previewing sort of a vision as to what we need to focus on in the next year or two years and how we, as we look at these subcommittees, ad hoc subcommittees, how we can better formulate them and make some changes. Some of the work that has already been done in the past and some of the work that need to be done in the future and how better align our resources and time and our subcommittees so that we can focus on things that are most important to the city. And then as we look at, you know, the Budget Finance, that's the committee where we need to look at some of the larger ticket items, you know, how we allocate budget appropriately if we were to have any items in the future that requires a budget impact. You know, we need to have a budget subcommittee or Budget Appropriation Committee to look through all of that and then bring it forward to the council so that, you know, we have an effective discussion. So I think that's what this committee would likely to serve in. You know, also, we've already, we historically have had the Commission and Committee Interview, just renaming that to, you know, Committee and Commission Appointment because that's the committee at which we look at all those applicants moving forward, how we can get them into, how we fill all these committees and commissions. The Infrastructure and Climate Change and Sea Level Rise, instead of being specific to Climate Change and Sea Level Rise, I mean, they all belong into environmental sustainability. And hopefully this ad hoc committee moving forward can focus on, you know, more environmental sustainability issues and infrastructures. The Public Safety and the Homelessness, I mean, it really belongs into a single conversation. And hopefully the Public Safety Committee in the future will also not only look at homelessness but as well as working with the chief and also with CCFD, moving forward to focusing our public safety resources and how better prioritize these resources. MSASP Westside Development and the Eastside Specific Plan, all of that really looks at, you know, land use as a holistic approach, and I think that's what would benefit all of us in the future. I think we as a city, you know, 3.2 square mile, we need to look at all of us as a single city rather than trying to distinguish them whether they're east or the west side. Because Millbrae is one, as far as I could see. So having a land use subcommittee to look at all of that together from a land use lenses would certainly make sense. We're not changing, I'm not proposing any changes to legislative and technology. We've been working with a legislative representative in Sacramento last couple of years and has been quite effective, I will say. You know, City Manager, perhaps you can speak to it. Michelle Rubicava has been our contact there, has been doing wonderful work for us, you know, getting us in touch with HCD, with the Governor's Office, you know, trying to get in touch with High Street Rail and all the things that we needed solution and to sort of bring about collaborations with different state agencies. She's been, you know, she and her firm has been nothing but exceptional for us. So I think the Legislative Committee has been very effective in the past and it's money well spent and I think there's a very good reason to continuing that. And, you know, forming the economic development, you know, it's just a way for us to really focus on that effort. I think there is a lot of focus on that in the, you know, past cycle. And I want to really drill down on it because I think having this subcommittee, you know, giving us this, the two council member being able to work on these initiatives and then bring forward to the full council or adoptions would certainly help the efficiencies and formulating, you know, this sort of a brainstorming access, through this brainstorming exercise at the subcommittee level. So I thought that would be beneficial. Parking Authority, this is something that we've adopted last year, City Manager, if I'm not mistaken, that this parking authority as an organization and looking forward to doing, you know, different parking strategies, new parking structures and how we could sort of enhance our downtown and ensuring that, you know, those who come to our downtown have a parking space within a few minutes of walking distance and how we need to look at parking strategy as a whole in the future. So there is a lot of work involved in that initiative, you know, in the upcoming year or two. And so I think it might be helpful to have a subcommittee formed to focus on that effort. And then rules, you know, we're likely to focus on things like, you know, updating our protocol, you know, how we need to look at rotation in the future because now we're all district compared to, you know, in the past where all the members of the council were elected at large, you know, that committee will need to start looking at some of those updates, how items are being brought in front of the agenda and all the other things that has to do with how this council operates now that we're fully, you know, amended into five different districts. Some of these changes in our protocol in the future would likely come from this Rules Subcommittee. The Joint School, you know, I think we have, is it biannually or is it annually? City Clerk, remember the meeting, the joint meeting with the MSD?
Biannually.
Biannually. So rather than having sort of a subcommittee, the way I look at subcommittee is sort of a working group, right? Sort of a brainstorming group where we formulate different ideas, how to, you know, bring about policy decisions. But to work with school district, I think last year we discussed working with the sports court and a few other things where the school district need resources for mud and collaborations with us and vice versa. I thought having a school district liaison to work with them would likely be effective instead of, you know, having a subcommittee where, you know, folks having meetings and I just want to make sure we're effective and not having more meetings than absolutely necessary. So I thought that would be helpful. And then the social equity and the cultural inclusion, that is likely to come back in the council in the future relatively soon here, hopefully. If you all remember, that was a, an ad hoc commission that was formed last year with 20, 25 members. And I think it deserves a restart and eventually, you know, hopefully sooner rather than later, becoming a committee or commission, just like anything else in the city, any other committee and the commissions in the city and having a liaison appointed to serve from the council to serve as their liaison so that we can eventually have this Social Equity and Cultural Inclusion Committee restarted sooner rather than later. That's, hopefully, that's something we can get done early this year. And that's what the liaison is going to serve for that function. And then the other recommendation is, you know, the Chamber of Commerce Liaison, it's, you know, the pass is more specific to Chamber of Commerce, but I see this liaison more from the council, representing the City Council to interact with the business community as a whole, you know, all the downtown businesses, all the, you know, the Chamber of Commerce operations in the future and helping them with new business establishment and working closely in the future with the Economic Development Advisory Committee to really help facilitate our economic development in downtown in the future. That's how I see it as an overall strategy moving forward here. So happy to take any questions from this council. I intend this to be a dynamic discussion for all of us. I know there's a lot to take in here, but that's, I see it as sort of a natural progressions where we need to, where we need to go moving forward. So I'll take any questions and comment from this council. Go ahead, Councilmember Nguyen.
Just more of a comment, but I totally understand why we need parking authority, but do you think there's opportunity to also look at traffic as part of that as well?
Traffic as in?
Traffic management, you know how we talk about traffic calming?
Right. So that would be more DPW, right?
Well, yeah, that would be with the infrastructure and environmental.
There you go.
Is where we take traffic. The parking authority specifically, so the parking authority under state law, the City Council adopted it in a specific area of the city several years ago. We need to come back and just adopt the parking authority boundary pursuant to state law citywide. But the parking authority itself is the City Council wearing a different hat under state law. And so we can get into that as we progress this year. But it provides the City Council with your general law city, City of Millbrae, with a parking authority, you have special legislation that affords you the opportunity to issue bonds, revenue bonds from parking revenue, for example, get involved in real estate development transactions in a public-private partnership, that type of thing. So this is, and Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, just a subcommittee to vet some of that and then bring it to the full council.
Correct.
With recommendations. So the parking authority itself is the council. This would be a subcommittee to vet all of the details and minutia and then make that recommendation of the full council.
Yeah, and just.
Sorry, Mayor, because there's going to be a lot of decisions. We're going to be bringing the parking management plan to the City Council here in the next several meetings. And as we roll that out and implement the policies, time limit parking, the types of equipment, the technology for paid parking, and then as we get into redeveloping some of our surface parking lots into structural parking, there's a lot of decision-making and work that will occur.
Yeah, just for the benefit of this council, subcommittee such as this where it takes two council members, it's meant to be a working group where you hash out some of the policy recommendations to bring it back to the full council for adoption and modifications and decisions. So that's what this subcommittee is supposed to do. Whereas liaison, it's usually the council will assign a single council member as a liaison to a committee or a commission that has got their own working plan, get their own, you know, sort of work plan and then sort of facilitate as a liaison rather than being the policy recommendation or working group for that. So that's the difference between the two, just so we understand. At different stages of these different committees, some are needed because there's more, I don't want to say grunt work, but there's more policy discussion that needs to take place. That's when two councilmen working together, bring back the recommendation to the full council for adoption will be useful. Whereas when you have a more mature organization, that the, that the council need to liaison with, that's when assigning a single liaison would make sense from my perspective. So. Any further comments? Councilmember Nguyen?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you for putting this together. I think I agree with most of this, just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
One of them is about the Rules Committee. I think you mentioned that would be updating council protocols would be the objective of that. I would just say from, with experience and observation, that's something that seems like each year there's maybe one council member that says, oh, we should suggest, it's something that comes up like, oh, we should update the protocols.
Yeah.
But it's generally a pretty low priority when council has done gold setting in the past. And of course, we have different people on the council now than in the past. But I just wonder, is there, is that something that's likely to have much work to actually need its own subcommittee?
If I may.
It could always be sunset after a year, I guess.
You know, I do think, and these are ad hoc, right?
Yeah.
And so I do believe because of district elections, they do need to be updated in that area. As we know, it's a, it's a little bit cumbersome in placement of items on the agenda. I think there can be improvement there. So I think that once that work is complete and we bring the protocols up to date with our districts and some other policies, you present that to the full city, you know, things are vetted through, present to the full City Council for discussion.
Yes, absolutely.
Once that's adopted, then this, then this could actually go away if it's the desire of the council.
Yeah.
Or there's something that may come out of the protocols that creates a, a formalized Rules Committee, not an ad hoc committee or something like that. So, but I think that's to be determined by the City Council as we start with the Rules Committee to review the protocols and maybe other operational policies within the governance of the City Council as well.
Yeah, just, yeah, let me just try to perhaps bring about the context of why I thought that was important to have. You know, first of all, as I said a moment ago, we've now fully implemented to five different districts. So the rotation will need to be discussed upon and that's part of the protocol. So that's when the Rules Committee will have to have those discussions. By the way, all these discussions are recommend, there's just recommendations. The actual adoption will have to come back to the full council for a full discussion. And there'll be plenty of opportunity for amendments, modification, so on and so forth. These two council member who is being assigned to these committees will just be chartered to have to get started with the discussion, come up with a recommendation for the full council for further discussion and further adoption and further amendment. So that's, the district is number one. Number two, how to place item on the agenda and also, you know, we've had the discussion last year, we had a robust discussion last year, whether or not certain item belong in the City Council, whether or not foreign issues and what have you, you know, ceasefires, all of that stuff, whether or not that belongs in this council discussion. So some of these things, you know, would likely benefit from clarifications in our protocol in the future so that these things are relatively debated upon and settled. So, you know, there'll be less gray areas moving forward, hopefully, and be more structured and be more streamlined. I think we all benefit from less ambiguity moving forward so that we can better focus our businesses. So that's what I intended this Rule Committees to discuss. And certainly, if, if, you know, these issues get hashed out and resolved, you know, just like any other ad hoc committee, it can go away after the work is done. And so, does that answer your question, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I think so, yes. And then one other question I had. So there was a recommendation to combine the MSASP Westside Development and the Eastside Specific Plan into a land use subcommittee. And then there's also a recommendation to form an Economic Development Subcommittee. So in my opinion, there's, I think, a lot of kind of overlap between those two issues because I think economic development is largely going to be about development, physical development projects, right, and land use.
The way I see land use is, is planning, you know, whether or not certain height limit or certain, you know, FAR density, that type of discussions, whether or not, I mean, last year we've adopted this business overlay on certain northern part of the cities, you know, those are the type of decisions that we discuss within land use. But economic development could be things like, how do we incentivize businesses to come in? You know, how do we do certain tax break, for example, if exists or if warranted, or certain businesses want to come in, let's say, how do we attract more life sciences, for example? Or how do we attract additional hotels to be built? Or how do we bring about, you know, filling up all the office space in the future, for example, should, you know, more office space being built up? So those are the type of things that are more business oriented, that geared towards economic development and increasing tax revenue, those policies, whereas land use is exactly as it is. It's land use policy, you know, finalizing the Eastside Specific Plan in a way that fits our city where we can better find opportunities on some of those areas that could be more strategically zoned or rezoned because we do have a few properties in the cities, you know, the pipe yard, for example, and some of the other open space that could be better utilized. Evaluating, you know, certain land one zoning, for example, how we can better use them. So those are the land use decision that not necessarily business oriented, business development oriented, but more land use specific discussion. So they're a little bit different, although I see your point about how certain land use application that comes in has to do with business development in the future. But, you know, that's not the same in terms of the policy decision.
Okay. So do you envision either of these committees? So do you envision either of these committees, for example, reviewing development applications or if there's, you know, a prospective developer saying, hey, I'm interested in buying a certain property or I'm interested in doing X, Y, and Z to my property, would you be interested in, you know, rezoning or what does the city think about that? Is that something that you think would make it to the level of a council subcommittee? Or is that more of a staff level decision?
Maybe I can help out there.
City Manager.
So when it comes to entitlements and land development, we're governed by state law, right, and the planning commission? So I don't see this us bringing that type of item to the subcommittee, I think it's policy, so it's more long-range planning. Should we rezone this area from, you know, one zone to another zone? We have a situation right now up off of Millbrae Avenue, just as an example, I know it's not on the agenda, but it's large lot residential staff, where we want to take a look at that and bring it and vet through, does that make sense to bring it just to R1, right, to eliminate the large lot, especially given state law and legislation on development? So I see, I see us bringing those types of policy questions to see if we should go forward or not go forward, get direction, vet through kind of the weeds before we bring it to the city council. I don't see land development projects going to the land use committee, there's already laws that govern the process for that review.
Okay. But what about sort of the gray area of it's not, you know, a formally filed application on the council, it's somebody who calls up City Hall and says, hey, I'm interested in doing X, Y, and Z, or I've talked to property owner A and they're interested in doing some deal with me to do a development on their site.
Yeah.
But nothing has been formally filed with the city.
I think council member on something like that, as we've done in the past, is we recommend individual meetings, right, with each city council member and then have a study session with the full council, I think that's the most appropriate. This is more policy-driven, long-range planning type decision-making and direction, is how I see it.
Rather than, so it's basically, it's not development-specific, but rather, right?
Yeah, right.
It's not as development-specific, to answer the question simply, it's really about long-range planning, land use decision, height limits, right, land use destinations, density, that sort of questions.
Yeah, not individual project applications, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Mr. Rinaldi? Mr. Riley? Ms. Riley? Okay. So that's, that's what I proposed, to stop being working with staff for, you know, better part of the last couple of weeks to put it together, and so I think this fits into the future discussion and the future vision of this council as we move on to goal settings, you know, you know, obviously parking authority has been adopted as part of our adopted goal. Economic development is something that we know we want to pursue, and so those are the type of, you know, sort of a long-range planning and vision that I see as the next step naturally for this council to focus on in the year or two ahead. So I'm hoping that I can get this council to work together on this.
And, Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of the council, you have a lot of new council members that just keep in mind that things like this are fluid and dynamic, so if we, you know, if the council adopts something like this and it's not working out or it needs to be amended or changed, we can always come back to the city council and, you know, shift gears and pivot on things, so just please keep that in mind as well, so.
Any public comment on this item? I don't think we have any public comments.
There are no speaker slipper people online with their hands raised.
Okay, excellent, thank you so much. Bring it back to the council. Any further comment? If not, we love to entertain motions on this item.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from the Vice Mayor.
I'll second that.
We have a second from Councilmember Rinaldi. Any last comment? City Clerk, would you please?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Hi.
Councilmember Riley?
Hi.
Councilmember Rinaldi?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hollibur?
Hi.
Mayor Feng?
Hi.
The city council updated the council ad hoc subcommittee as recommended by Mayor Feng.
Okay, thank you very much, and I want to thank all my colleagues on this for supporting this item. Okay, council comment, this is the part of the council for individual council member to report out on some of the committees and commissions that they serve on and things that pertains to the city's business. I understand that most of you have not had, been assigned to some of the regional roles just yet, but to the extent that you want to share any particular comment, I'd be happy to let you have the floor. Anybody? Not quite? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'll make a comment.
Sure.
And this was alluded to by some of the public speakers earlier today, but I did put in a request for the council to consider a resolution of no confidence in Sheriff Corpus, and I would like to see that on an upcoming council agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I will speak for Councilmember Rinaldi.
Yes.
To congratulate him on his regional appointment.
There you go, on left coat.
And more to come, so.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Councilmember Rinaldi.
Yeah, and I believe the ABAC alternative on the executive board is still outstanding and it's going to come back in the next city selection committee meeting, at which point, you know, the last voting, last round of voting in the last meeting, Mr. Rinaldi, Councilmember Rinaldi actually get nine votes out of 16, so I'm hopeful that we can continue to work on that and eventually can help expand our representation of Millbrae at a regional level.
Not bad for the rookie year.
Before the first council meeting actually took place.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, all right. So, so much of the council comment that I intended to provide has already been said today. You know, it's about the Transportation Authority, which I serve on the Transportation Authority that oversees Measure A, Measure W, and we recently received over $1.7 million a grand on three different items, so I'm very thankful that Millbrae is now finally getting our fair share on much of these regional resources to help, you know, with better traffic safety. We have mobility for the seniors and connectivities, mobilities between Spirit Trails and some of the downtown areas, so that's extremely important to us. You know, CCAC have a new program coming up for Safe Route to School, which I have spoken to the Director Patista about, there's opportunity in this upcoming cycle to hopefully get some regional funding to further provide better safe route to school for our children every day. So I'm hoping that we can get some applications in and work with the staff to getting some much-needed resources for that. Thankful for PCE coming in today to give a briefing on the surplus funds and how we benefited over $300,000 from those resources to put together. So EV chargers and solar panels and hopefully, you know, sooner rather than later battery installation to increase the resiliency of our electricity delivery. So those are the three big committees that I serve on. Just a little bit of an update on the governor's budget as well. The governor just released a proposed 25 to 26 budget for this fiscal year, and the top line message from relief, that's been released a few days ago, was that the state is no longer in a deficit, depends on who's counting, and the governor is proposing a balanced budget, and the governor's budget, it's about $322.3 billion with a modest surplus of about $363 million and have a reserve of about $16.9 billion. The governor continues to prioritize housing, homelessness, education, mental health, crime, crime prevention, I should say, and climate and economic growth. More to be done, you know, at the California Legislature, from what I understand, is prioritizing and focusing on increasing our affordability this year. So hopefully, you know, it's much of the work that we've been doing, you know, whereas on PCE, it's about affordability because we're just committed to a 10% reduction from PG&E rate for the next six months, and historically even we've been committed to a 5% reduction from a PG&E rate on utility. And I cannot tell you how many times I heard from people that, you know, electricity and utility bills are getting increasingly unaffordable. So that's an important aspect to everybody's budget, and we're doing everything we can to make sure people who live in the Bay Area can stay in the Bay Area, and that has been the goal and will likely to be a more focused effort this year for the legislature as well as some of the regional boards that we serve. So that's kind of where I am in this first meeting of January, unless anybody else have any other comment. Councilmember Rinaldi, you have enclosing in memory of a member of our community.
Thank you, Mayor Feng. I alluded to it earlier in the meeting, Joseph Bosensaglu recently passed earlier this year, fantastic community member, many years since the 80s, father to both Bill and John Bosensaglu, beloved husband to Joanne, just an all-around great role model and great man, so. Many of you probably remember him from downtown Millbrae, Pete's or Starbucks where you'd run into him holding court on any topic of the day, but a fantastic human being and great role model growing up, and you're missed, you're missed, Joseph.
Thank you very much, and I adjourn this meeting tonight at 9:42 PM. Thank you all.